I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, take your own call, please.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Matson?
Here.
Jazz?
Yes.
And Los Liger is absent with us.
All right, do we... so did our...
So, just to let you know, I got an email from the gal that's with Dakota Cannibalis and she can't get off out of her driveway on the road. So she didn't think she'd make it to this meeting if she didn't show up, which she is not here. She asked if we could move it to the next agenda.
So I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda with that item moved forward to one meeting. And we're gonna get down to this. It's the last two under applications in...
Correct.
Right there. She's the last one.
Yes, the Dakota Cannibalis applications.
Motion to approve the agenda as per the change of the Cannibalis application. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No bills other than what you already had me do, right?
Correct.
Those are next, uh, last thing? Public comment? Anybody that would like to make any public comment? Any items not on the agenda?
First off, just want to thank the city guys for taking care of this last small question for you, Craig. As a private homeowner, is there anywhere in town that I can haul snow and dump?
We just got our spots and I went through the contractors that are on LA too, so...
Okay, just... I know a lot of us are doing a lot of snow pile up in our yards where it's going to be a safety hazard, especially in the boulevard. Like my 89-year-old neighbor smokes so high in the boulevard, she can't see she's in her car, so...
We've got a couple different spots that we haul to, and I don't think we'll fill up, but we haven't been... Now will we be able to haul up to these spots?
Just a quick question. Figured I'd ask while I was here.
Yeah.
Say thanks again for the great job you guys are doing.
Do you have the minutes, Arden, that we took off?
Oh, did I miss something?
Yep.
Gee whiz, that's not been very important to me. How about the minutes from December 20th meeting?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And one abstained. All right, thank you for stopping me before we got all the way to the end. Applications agreements, organses. The first one up is 705 hearing for garbage license renewals for NOVAC, Pressman's Sanitation, Multi-Sunrise Sanitary Service, and RBS. Information is all in your packet with approval recommendation from city staff.
I make motion to approve your renewal on the temporary licenses.
Any discussion?
Since I'm new, just we've evaluated license fee in the last 20 years and it's competitive, similar to like with other communities.
I guess we have not.
Can we check that?
All non-check.
How can I make... I'll make one comment. I had an email conversation with John Pressman today. They had posted on their website and he, and I think on their Facebook page, that they weren't picking up this whole week. And the reason I sent him the note was I was shooting down Main Street. There was trash cans everywhere in the snow. The people had set out and then they got buried. I wonder if we should maybe have a little further discussion with them, you know? So we maybe, I mean, this was kind of, it came up kind of quick, but still, it'd be nice if we could develop some sort of a policy so we kind of know or how do we let everybody know?
Initially, they put on their, over at the daylight, so that your cars can get out there and we get to...
A daylight, right.
...all out there when it's snowing.
Right, then they changed it and went to... yeah.
I think they have, I mean, put those on there, on page and app, I mean...
Yeah, I sent you a Facebook post, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I did ask him, I said, "Did you..." I said, "I know I seen it on your Facebook, on your Facebook page." I said, "Did you think about maybe throwing it on Hartford Avenue?" And he said, "You check and see if it got done." Maybe he might have done it.
He didn't make it.
He might have done it, because I suggested that maybe that'd be a place to let, let people know.
People were plenty, I mean, I think people thought that Monday was a holiday.
Yeah.
Trash pickup was gonna be late anyway.
Right.
There was still stuff on there, so...
Yeah. Yeah, so, anyway, that's just a, just a two cents.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we will vote. Matson?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. Well, I can't even stretch this one to the next one. Seven ten.
So you needed to ask two more questions.
Uh, let's drop down and do the review approved Cannibalis cultivation renewal for grow farms.
That's... You put the Dakota Cannibalis one off.
Yeah, we put the other one off. She's not in here until next month.
Yep, correct.
This is a renewal. They've been at it for...
Well, since March.
March, yeah, and everything seems to be going fine. They haven't had any...
Had any, within our report, we haven't had any complaints, any questions. Nobody has contacted City Hall with them, with Mr. Stevens.
You are...
Uh, my name is Andy Kimin.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I'm the owner of...
You bet.
Grow Farms.
And far as your concern, everything going fine?
It's been a year. But in that year, the dead have not risen to piece to come a living, and the sky has not fallen. So, I would very much like the opportunity and privilege to continue to do what I'm doing and pay my, pay my taxes.
There you go. Any action from the council on this renewal?
Motion to approve the renewal for grow farms.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seven ten.
It's a blessing on hers.
It is both. Okay, our seven ten hearing is for Resolution 20, 23-1, annexation petitions amended by Hartford Area Development for parcels 81-344 and 86-328. Information is in your packet with recommendation for approval from staff. Anything you need to add, Teresa?
Just, like, put it right forth. This is going in front of the P&amp;Z board at their meeting last week, and they are recommending approval as well.
There's a question about the row again, so now that it's city on both sides, that section?
So this came up at the P&amp;Z meeting. We will have to meet with the county, which we're actually meeting on Friday, so we will discuss that portion because part of it will be city on both sides. But, you know, there's those three homes along there that won't be, so we're gonna have to coordinate who's going to maintain and take care of that.
So the black line on the map, they're not in city limits?
So this parcel goes around these houses.
Right.
I see, yeah, so where those houses are would not be in city limits.
Why would we do that? Why would we annex that in?
They have not petitioned to be annexed in.
I think you're about to get a lot of benefits without being annexed in. I mean, they're gonna be in city.
And it is good practice that once the city surrounds a parcel, to have them annexed into city limits just for services, like you pointed out, you know, who's gonna take care of the row? Who's gonna do the emergency maintenance services to them and whatnot? At this, like I said, but they have not petitioned to annex in, just the owners of HADF, that only the parcel has. To bring them in, we would have to do a forced annexation if they don't want to. I mean, we definitely can always approach them and ask them if they want to come into city, which we've done that before with the property on Western. But if they don't want it, we would have to go down the road and force annexation.
It just seems unrealistic to have them not be...
So example of where that exists is on 38, on the north side of 38, 3 North, 3 North Ave, maybe these close, close enough.
Or just around that as well.
I saw some negatives, those parcels weren't considered in the show.
Right.
That's a highway though, that's always gonna be a state.
You would assume yes, but again, as you said, there's some benefits to taking, yeah, there's from being that awesome, being able to be annexed, yeah. Also similar on the corner of nine from the cultural road, or five, probably there's...
Yep, very long cultural road, there's...
Right.
Yeah, it's apartment school there.
That's plenty of the rest of the street, that's the old...
Those, 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 those.
That one is...
The one right next to it.
Last, and... Right.
Do you know if there's any conversation with those homeowners?
So those, these homeowners?
Yes.
There's, now that I'm aware. Like I said, we can always approach them and...
MVPs or anything like everyone else doing?
Right.
They don't, I think, quite.
They're on the road part right now, right?
Yeah, none of them are on city services. If they would want to be on city services, that's how we kind of worked it with the property that was on Western. We offered to give them free hookup to city water and sewer, and that was enough to get them to annex into the city.
Sure.
And we can point out the different benefits and Alex can ask them.
It's just, same kind of strange.
Yeah, as we go, like, since we started, there's gonna happen with different topics and at some point we'll...
And the map that we have, it picks up again at the corner of Highway 38, the Western area is back in city limits, or we're...
No, we're not on both sides until you go all the way down to Mint Street. So it's past Highway 38, you've got to go all the way to Mint Street, you know, that block has to, before you get city limits on both sides. The city has jurisdiction over the road.
Sort of west there, that's... One of the creative stuff.
Yep.
Yeah.
Pretty much everything north of Wartham Luke's is not in city limits.
Not as, not as, not as, not as...
No, it's not. Yeah, they're silent, so, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion for a second here. We have not yet.
You know who was that little corner, like, in the east corner of that? There's like a little spot?
Yes, where those slash marks are. I think that's an H plat, so I think the county has it, but when you go into their GIS system, it doesn't show any ownership on it.
It's a what? That used to be a road, actually, when we came down, it actually circled and ended up, so it's all, my county, it was right away.
H plats are like...
Eight ways.
It's just been a plat, it's called an H plat, and it's usually for right away. So I think, like, I think that's what it was, and I think the county used to own it, and they cleared it off, and they still own it, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the... Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Brenneman?
Yeah.
Matson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, and we have Dakota Cannibalis move to the next meeting. It's here of all those. We'll go to reports. Sheriff Deputy, as well as these...
He did not make it in, he also...
His report is in the thing.
And he also added, you'll notice over the second sheet, with, he kind of gave a little breath of comparison of the last couple of years, just kind of for your...
I made a note for him for a second. I wanted to ask him something about that, because it seemed like our calls for service, we have a huge drop from last year to this year.
One holiday, one, like, two calls plus.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's almost...
July is weird for some reason.
Yeah, because I thought when I seen that, it looked like it was, that's what I wanted to ask him about. So if you see him, Teresa, just say...
Yep.
That was the, because it just seemed like they have kind of a funny drop from...
For a record, seven months into...
Yeah, it's like...
If you look at August though, the previous year, that was lower than August of this year, so it's just...
I'll ask him if there's any rhyme or reason for the difference in here.
Anyway, that was the, that was the thing that I made when I was looking for stuff.
Very long, gotta get through the block, man.
There we go.
Just for the councils, uh, information I've ordered on that HAFDA, uh, because I'm a longer part of the... Or I sound like it.
Yeah.
Put it on the record.
Yeah.
All, or Hartford Avenue's closed.
All right, Amy's gone. We got her report in the packet also. I see she's been on Hartford Capings a little bit, so she must be, she must be monitoring wherever in Arizona she's at.
She's something, you know, being shot out, so...
I'm sure by the time we get back, we'll have plenty of information for her. All right, let's move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Michael, I see you got dug out.
I got dug out too. Good evening, everyone. Not too much going on since the last meeting. Just sent the 23 slurry sealed plans off to the Siusu Falls, and we'll look for that bid later this spring. And then we continue to work through the Summit, current pipelines, stuff with the city. Main project update this week is really the, really just the Highway 38 water main. We've completed those plans and are currently in the permits between the DNR County and DOT, proposed Corning Beach Township on that. So we'll do that through the month of January, and then as you can see in our report, our plan is to get the evidence bids published end of the month. And then actually get that bid mid-February. That's usually a really good time to do it, everyone. That's usually a lot of projects bid to. You start pushing mid-March, under March, early April, you start getting contractors to fill up, that's the basis of the prices. So, as, same details I previously have presented on, planning to start the 22nd of May. Just under school gets out since we are adjacent to the bus barn there. And then, you know, finish mid-September, should allow plenty of time to fall for punch those numbers for winter. So the plans, as we have them to date, have an estimated cost of $906,738.53. This does include a 10% contingency, just due to, you know, the current market and how things have just been fluctuating lately. Any questions on Highway 38's schedule, process, no plans?
Nope, we may as well deal with that right now, I would guess. Any actions from the council on that approval to develop that bid? Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
All right, you got anything else for us?
Nope, unless you have any questions for me, that is all.
All right. Got a place we can dump snow?
I have a question. Where would I find the city's design standard for the sidewalk approach? Of the, you know, the bump pads?
The detectable, like, the red panels?
Yes, those. Those design standards.
That is not, the city, so the city doesn't have different standards, that's more of an issue by standard, yeah. So they, they're all, the AEA and the Federal Highway Administration is part, one of the agencies, so that's their hands in that. They set minimum design standards, and then states or cities can impose more restrictors, more restrictive standards. And since the city department does not have those, we default to the city's results, which just follows what the AEA access code has.
So that's, and that's the portion, the really two bid items essentially that were overlooked on the Vandemark, or the Mont, Mont Avenue project. Was it those, specifically pertaining to those? Was it in the road?
The valley gutters, through the roadway, not the actual sidewalk?
You recall, Craig? So there was, we had X number of linear feet for curving guard, and then a portion of that came out because it should have been...
It should have been a different bid item, yes.
Yeah, and I was thinking it was the...
The fillet, the fillet type of intersection, which is trying to appease, and the valley gutters too.
Because we bid the Iowa way with Mount Sun for, or something like that, and then there's some handwork that had to be done with the other part of it, that's gonna, there's that change over here.
And the reason I ask is as I'm rolling out my little sidewalk on the corner there, it's the size of a Chrysler. And the stop sign is kind of in the way of the, of the firehiker. Where's this design standard?
I know there's supposed to be some, I don't know if it popped in my head, but I know there's supposed to be some space around the island that has to be cleared.
Right.
From, from...
Well, I mean, clearing of snow, but I think...
You're saying the side of the way.
When you look at clearances for firehikers, they'll drive up on the trail. See how he stuck the light foot away from them? So they aren't gonna be moving up.
Details, details.
All right, anything else, Michael, for us?
I'd say go right through the twice.
Any other questions for our city engineer?
I haven't got a spot there.
No, it's fine.
We'll move on to Snow Alert, Craig.
Uh, with streets, like Teresa mentioned, we were gonna meet with Steve, actually, today to talk about that, about annexation of that property up there. Plus, we also can talk to him about the Western Avenue section, what we can do in the future to be on the same page if it gets shut down, when we're gonna shut it down, how are we gonna keep it open? So, we have a party for today, this morning, but with everything going on, we postponed until Friday, so that'd be, that'd be... Hopefully get a bunch of answers. Like I said, these guys, the new super tenants, these pretty decent people, definitely, I think we'll have good conversations this year. The only other thing that, this size would seem very important, I guess, with the 20 inches of snow that we have, which is probably more than that. Our roads are getting narrow, we are running out of spots anywhere to put it. We got some options. We can pull it in and haul, which would be really costly. We can fight to open up as much as we can, and we're trying not to fill driveways in anymore than we have already. We're gonna, tomorrow, we're gonna try to, we're gonna take the plows down two different directions down the street to keep with the driveways and try to get a pushback. But we're actually at the point where it's high enough now that the plows can't even throw it up and hold it up anymore. So we are losing some depth on our roads. We can go back in there with loaders and try to push it back, but then we're gonna be getting up to the sidewalks on some of these properties very easily. So I wanted to kind of hear what you guys all thought about it, what you want to do. I think we'll be, for the most part, this snowing up, we'll probably make it, and we'll be okay as far as storage for snow. But if we get any more soon, we're gonna be to the point where we're either gonna lose our streets, or we're gonna lose sidewalks, or it's gonna be dang costly to haul snow.
And so, I mean, that's a time.
What time?
If we haul it, it's gonna take a lot of time.
A lot of time, and it'd probably take, with just what we've got, if we try to haul it ourselves, it'd probably take a week to a street before, like, going to something like that.
One, one week on the street?
Probably.
It's like...
There's a lot of loads in there, just on, just on Main Street today. The street itself is in pretty good shape, but we cleaned the sidewalks off, and we had, I bet you, 15, 20, 20 truckloads if we'd have just hauled the sidewalks off. That pile that's over there at First and Main right now, that's just from today's, from last night.
By the elevator there?
Yeah, that's just from today.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, and I guess to put it in perspective, as I said, the council, it's been taking three days to clear the main street.
We've hauled probably 200 to 250 loads so far, and Sioux Falls, and Sioux Falls said that they'd haul 1,000, I've seen that in the news, and I thought, we've already hauled 200, 250 loads.
So, okay, let's try to, let's kind of, let's see if we can hit these one at a time. So what do we feel, I'll use Mickelson as an example, because you road grade that, that's a, you know, it's a road that gets a lot of traffic. Get out there and you clean it early, but we're at a point, Craig, when you go past that maintainer, you're gonna be flipping into the sidewalk, just, I mean, there's gonna be no keeping ahead of it.
Right now, I don't think I can even get it up and over that. I mean, it just falls behind the plow.
Right, right, and our, it's deep, and our boulevard out there, it's deep.
A lot of boulevards, it gets so deep, and piled up so high, we can't put any more on the boulevard.
And the average, we're probably losing right now about, you know, between six feet, probably roughly, of street surface, that we, that's how far in...
You can't move it.
You can't, go whatever way, so we gotta put it on.
I think you're probably a good idea to identify key roads that have to have it moved, like, on Main Street or some of those that you're, I mean, obviously pushing to. It's like, or on all the businesses.
Main, I got pretty close to the curb today, but, like I said, it's old, I can't, next no, I don't have any place to...
And then other streets where...
Yeah, like, maybe some of that where, the one side, we can actually throw it over, bring it wing up and throw it over, but eventually that's gonna be full to...
Correct.
So do we have a blower that we could use there?
The only we got is a skid steer. The blower worked fine, like, on Mickelson, that area in town. Back in the 90s, we ended up going up to Party and blowing stuff up there.
Yeah.
And eventually, you're filling up the neighbors' yards, you're filling up everything, and then you're, they don't want it there because of the spring thaw, they're gonna have water in the basements and stuff.
Yeah.
So they don't want it either. So like, in town, we'd have a hard, you know, we don't even, could do is blow it into a truck, you know, and then...
Right.
I think it probably would hurt to just, you know, do some emergency planning in terms of another, whatever you think is critical. Another six inches of snow, another 12 inches of snow, what would you do?
Where would the worst points be, falling snow on urban, or similar response to something like that, or say?
We're gonna try to, like, for this one here, we do have a lot of haul-in intersections and stuff like that. We're gonna start on, we're gonna get the firehikers opened up, get them following. And then, we're gonna work on some roads, try to get them widened up this time around, but, I mean, if we get some nice weather, it's gonna shrink it and settle it. So there'll be some room again to throw it up and over, but if it doesn't, you know, like I said, then we're gonna have to decide what... But if it doesn't, you know, like I said, then we're gonna have to decide what roads we even wanna leave narrow, you know?
Yeah, I mean, like the sidewalks, it's already empty, like, you know, such a noise, so if you...
Just to let you know, mentioning sidewalks, I've already talked with Kyle, I mean, we're not, we're not getting out there and finding anybody for not doing, getting sidewalks cleared with this kind of snow.
Are we giving tickets up the parking in the street? Or are we still gonna give the tickets for that?
They gave me tickets.
I'm kidding.
We would have been ticketing this last time, because we had the store word out for that, that Damian couldn't get the town, and the rest of deputies were running crazy.
Yeah, yeah, the sheriff's department told us, it says, we're not...
Tickets are a second thing.
Sheriff's department's getting stuck too, I know.
Well, that's another thing we can consider too, is no parking on the streets. If the streets are getting narrower, then can we go no parking on certain sides?
As I said, there are ones we could eliminate parking until a later date, or yeah, tell them to hurry as soon as possible.
Could I ask though, when are those people supposed to park? They can't park on their yard.
Well, I mean, honestly, it's unfortunate, but we take, the project we did this summer, people had to park at the ground jug, they had to park down the road and walk, and it's winter, it's cold, I get it, but... If it's unsafe and you can't have traffic, it's something to consider, I'm not saying we're doing it. Yeah, the other thing to consider is one-way streets too. I mean, if it gets that bad. Those are easy things that don't cost us money.
Eastern Avenue by the park, I went through there today and it was just bigger than my truck.
I mean, Partie's one of the...
Yeah, Partie's, yeah, both two ways.
And we're, like I said, we're gonna be hitting them harder the next few days at trying to get some of them lined back out, but some are gonna be off, or we should narrow. But if we get another six, eight inches of snow soon, we're gonna...
Right.
It's Thursday.
I saw it, I see that too.
Next Thursday? Yeah.
One snowflake, I've tried, I had to think about that.
So I just wanna kind of see what you guys think, if we, I mean, do we push it back onto the boulevards and cover sidewalks and shut sidewalks down, and then you push the kids to the streets?
Like especially, we get a bus stopped by us, and there are kids wanting, you don't want them in the street.
I think Mark's idea is a good one, and we have to do that with sidewalks and with parking, like one or the other.
Does it make sense, I mean, to come back to us, I'll send you to later, actually. And get some feedback from the school on where, where the kids are actually, or problems they're actually taking.
They usually get us busted.
Yeah. So we could identify those, obviously, if there's a safe route to school, or maybe they're out, try to have details open.
I mean, the new developments, we can still push them up into the lines and stuff like that, and not have to haul that, but it's just, the whole part of town is where we're gonna have the biggest issue.
What's our speed limit, 20?
20. And I, we actually cleaned Hoops earlier today, and I go down tonight, and snow loads, we can't even tell, we cleaned that road, and we were still back over the street.
We find them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we put that in on the website.
We put it on the website, okay, split through like people.
A lot of the snow loads came through the snow high, I don't think.
That's not the problem, it's on the sides, yeah, it's getting too...
A lot of it's just the wind blowing.
And then pickups with the plows on them are trying to push them across the street, and they're causing us issues, or, I mean, there's just, more people that are helping the snow remove are doing a lot of hurt to us as far as trying to keep the roads.
The two big things we want to keep in that stop if we can, is have them blowing out the street, and then we gotta, we're dealing with it everywhere, trying to keep it on their yard. We're pushing it onto their neighbors, we gotta stop that, because one of these times, somebody's gonna not take that very well, we don't need that. I mean, these blades are great, but man, they're right, they're just, they're shoving it wherever they can.
Oh, I got an awful lot of ideas, just annex them, all that 142 acres up there, is that a spot that just hauls snow and dump it? If the city needs to, since it's now a city...
We've got the sports complex in...
I mean, I'm sorry, can you get, it's not a way for... I mean, we've got a...
It's not a space thing, it's a manpower hauler, that powers.
Cause we got two dump trucks basically that don't have sanders on them, those got full sanders and melt, and hopefully one of us, we can do that next day or whatever.
Yeah, you want side dump, you know, 18 weathers.
We've hired Zacharias the past, I mean, I can definitely get some prices too from these guys and just get some numbers together. Like I said, I think we can, it's gonna take us some time, but I think we can get most of this kind of under control yet, this week. But like I said, if we get something else like this again, we're gonna have to hurt, so I can definitely get ahold of Zacharias to decide, I'm seeing you charge per hour, per truck, and, you know, something like that, but...
This Jed, does he have...
He's got, just regular dump truck, and he's just got the ones. He's actually been...
Zacharias probably be on that for that, because they got the side dumps. Why don't we do that Craig, let's get some, we might as well...
Paul's got called, called trucking, he's got a couple of side dumps.
Yeah, he's got some too, yeah.
Do you want to also maybe kind of put together a plan of, maybe what streets we could allow to narrow, which ones we can keep?
We better, we better plan it, we better start...
Maybe look at some that we could make one way, or have some kind of plan.
At least have some options.
We have A, B, and C option or something.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
We better best or...
Heck, while you're driving that maintainer Craig, you got all kinds of time to think.
I think...
Set your phone on and just talk to yourself, you know?
Plan B, July.
He better be in Fort July.
Like Justin said today, he goes, it's so, so bad that it costs this much to move snow and it melts all over the street.
You know what I've told you, every time I see you guys with a payloader and a dump truck, I can just sit on Main Street, burn hundred dollar bills.
100% contributing to getting rid of college snow already.
Yeah, I think we went through our issue this year, we have lots to...
For snowbite, it is.
Yeah, that's the other problem.
Doing the length of the field.
Guys, the business owner, employees can't make it to work to generate revenue here, yeah. Spending it like crazy though.
We'll go through some stuff.
Here, here, here!
We'll just, like, don't go too many more drivers, and I mean, people are kind of understanding it, but we'll just, we can keep drivers, we have filled in right now at the end of this year, and then... All we need to actually haul, and then we'll see a rule that, if you consider changing to go on ways or parking on one side or something like that.
And if you have to do that, then you can just sign up the sidewalk stat too.
For what sidewalks is...
Alright, you can get that put together, get her, Teresa, you can send her out to us and we can all pitch in our comments. Anything else, that's all you're, that's right, that's everything you're working on.
The one thing I take is that nobody's really in favor of covering sidewalks, so...
Well, we gotta have someplace for the kids, I'm gonna get with the school, just make sure we know what, man, life, some of them places, the pilots are so deep, I'm just afraid some kid's gonna dart out the street, and we're gonna have...
If we get another snow like that, well, people are not, I don't know how we would open our sidewalk.
Craig, look at that.
Ours aren't, right? Ours aren't. We haven't touched our sidewalks yet.
I'm gonna go on the street.
That's okay, they'll just come by, we're right back to your driveway.
Yeah, Craig, make a note of that, that's, uh, part B. Alright, well, thanks Craig, I know you guys have been burning some hours. I'd like to know after you talk to the guys from the county Friday, let me...
Sure.
If you can, just gotta send us a note, let us know what his thoughts are. Alright?
That's all I really have, unless anybody else has...
No?
No, thanks for all your work, thank you guys too.
I, I think you did really well. I mean, I could have went to work, but they told me not to come because everything in Sioux Falls is such a mess. Our roads we went on, no problem.
Joel, roll, you check the plows out?
It got going a little bit?
Yeah, I did that.
I'm surprised nobody hit that car that was stalled for a while on Highway 38 there.
Hope you don't, Karen, you got anything to add to your report?
Oh, I have one action item. Should we have to have an election in April, we need to set the election date. We normally go with the second Tuesday in April, which would be April 11th this year. We have four seats, their terms are up, one in each word, or major. So I would just need a motion if you guys want to set it for the second Tuesday in April, like we normally do, just make a motion to do that.
Alright.
Make a motion?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, anything else Karen?
Nope, that was it.
Alright. Teresa, you got, I see you got an action item on yours too, anything else other than that?
Um, just a couple little updates. The bike trail, the house that we needed the easement from, did change hands and it did close. We got the contact information, and so Craig is gonna try to make contact maybe in the next couple of weeks, and portray and kind of explain the project and see if we can get an easement or not. ISG though, in the meantime, is still looking at Plan B, other options, so you know, regardless one way or the other, we can move ahead this spring with something as far as moving that project forward. And then just a couple, couple little changes, I think, well, Craig told you that our meeting with the county changed till Friday, so yeah, I'll send up, you guys out an update of, you know, what our discussions were on that. And that's pretty much it, everything else should be in my report, and then, yes, I do have an action item. The South Dakota City Management Association is going to be having a meeting, February 8th and 9th, it's gonna, isn't here, it starts at noon on the 8th, and it's done at noon on the 9th. It's right after legislation day there. We haven't had an official meeting since COVID, so they kind of want to start every meetings again. They usually always do a couple little training sessions on different items, I haven't, not got that detailed yet, but they're working on it, so I would like to attend though.
Okay, any council action on that request?
Make a motion to approve the amendments after South Dakota City Management Association.
Any discussion? Not? We'll go Keel.
Yes.
Jazz? O'Hara?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
That's it. Alright. Anything else Teresa?
Nope.
Alright, we'll cut down to old business, update on Summit Pipeline.
I think I'm just gonna try to update you every meeting. I put, basically in blue, the update from the last go around. Just to let you know, the P U C still hasn't finalized a hearing schedule, they are meeting though Thursday, tomorrow, to hear, to talk about it again, I don't know if they'll finalize something or not. Originally, they wanted all the hearing done by this spring, there was a lot of complaints from the landowners, the farm owners, and all that's planting time and whatnot, and so they had staff come up with a new timeline, now it's this fall. Of course Summit is fighting that now, so I'll know more after tomorrow and see what the arguments are if they decide to set a timeline. Besides that, really, no significant update, like Michael kind of mentioned, they have come up with a plan of where proposed crossings could be for utilities. Me and Craig are gonna meet with them next week to kind of look that over. It looks reasonable, we will send that to Summit, so we can get their feedback as far as, you know, if they need to change depth or whatnot on their pipe in order to accommodate our future utility crossings, so... I guess we're working on that, and so we'll continue to move forward on that.
I had a gentleman contact me that lives down by Hudson, he was working on a, I would call it more of a county ordinance to include a one-mile setback. Had a nice visit with him and looked over his information, but I don't know right now, since they're not coming through our jurisdiction area, it's pretty hard for us to put a, put an ordinance on, on something that is not on our land. He is working with counties, and I said, that's, I mean, you really gotta get that thing approved by the county before any of the cities would be able to help him out, so...
Yeah, we, we're gonna talk a little bit after you got that phone call, and, and we can put an ordinance in place, but it's not gonna affect the Summit Pipeline, cause they're not in city, and so they're not in our jurisdiction, so none of our ordinances will pertain to them. Yeah, they, they really have to look to the county and push them to do something that I think they want them to do.
So, anyway, so that's, that's out there, and had that conversation with them. Yeah, I don't know, anything else they had on that, I think that's probably it. Alright?
Just still typo on your date, excuse me for a minute, I don't know, sorry, it's 12:40.
Yeah, yeah, I see it now that you mentioned it, I looked at it. I think it's the next forum.
Alright, we also were talking about reviewing the city firework ordinance, I know a councilman, Los Lager, had asked to have this put on. Have we discussed it, maybe at meeting I was gone, is it discussed?
Meeting you were gone, it was brought up, basically, we just wanted to get more information of what other cities do as far as dates they allow the use of fireworks, so I did include that in my staff report. That kind of spreadsheet of kind of the cities that are close to us, a lot of them are like us. Humboldt is the only city close that follows the state dates, which are, you know, more linear, are a lot more days. All the rest of the cities around us are more restrictive like us.
And if I understand Chris's reasoning for this was because it shortened the time that they'd be able to use fireworks because of the way the fourth falls this next year?
Yeah, I, I, the way I understood it is, I mean, it's still the same day, it just, it couldn't be over a weekend. So isn't that wasn't, yeah, that's kind of what I got from...
He wanted to do it till the weekend, he wanted to move it back.
He wanted to make sure they could do it over the weekend, it's kind of how I got it from them.
So the second, which is when it would open, is a Sunday, and it would end on Wednesday, the 5th. So I think he was just asking, could we move, like, include the 4th, the 1st for this year, so that you get a Saturday Sunday? Cause I think what he was...
And I think the only way, then we'd have a, it'd have to be a complete ordinance change.
It's changing an ordinance.
Most people will violate it.
They almost do.
Did we just want to?
We have a feeling it's gonna happen.
Well, you're on Friday.
No matter what we say. Okay.
That's what it, yeah.
Police calls will go up and go up.
Yeah, maybe we'll get back on track, yeah, thanks Sandy. Good catch Sandy.
We have to add on that dispute though.
I, I guess, I mean, I'm not in favor of saving it.
Alright, the only person next for please, so, yeah.
So I'd say right now, we're leaving it, leave it alone.
Looks like we're kind of in the middle of a hard, what cities are doing, and it's a long time to have fireworks.
My dog will appreciate it too. If you want to shoot them off, you can roll the dice.
Alright, we'll move on to new business, first one is discuss allocation of the Leo Shear funds for downtown Hartford. Sandy Dean's request. What do you mean?
No, Dean. Yes, Sandy Dean, for the downtown Hartford committee, we'd like to use $4,000 of the Leo Shear state funds to bring Bob Yell to town, 7/6. Be able to do a tour and program and reunion, to inform everyone of maybe some possibilities and the economic and other reasons for preservation and restoration. That's the place I sent the minutes to Teresa, so, you know, the board, I, I didn't make it up.
And it was 4,000 even, is that what you're...
Yeah, that's what he asked for, and I'm sure there'll be other advertising costs and that, but we got, like, the Historical Society, and even South Dakota Preservation, all those other organizations on board to help us with marketing and exercise, and then all the thoughts.
So the minutes say that downtown Hartford moved aside.
And, and so we have the minutes from downtown Hartford, you must have discussed this, and they made a motion.
We made a motion to request of the city to move that, that's why I brought it up, um, got it on the official agenda.
Did you, yeah, you had a script, you tried?
I did point out before too, as far as the sheer connection to that, they were very historic and preservation-minded, like, was one of the first to even start the senior citizens. She was one of those main ones that brought the whole library to town in the first place, she was also one of the... She was also the one who created the board to put the mud building on the National Register in order to keep it initially from being formed now, so, um, there's a lot of history with them that wanted to preserve and restore and maintain.
Good, we got any action from the council? Any more discussion? Not, or both, Brenneman?
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Although he wasn't there.
Never there. All right, thanks, Sandy, you bet. Uh, last item under new business, mayoral appointments. We have a city staff and city council member that sets on the parking rec board, this last year was Chris Woslaw and Craig. And I didn't shock to either one, sorry. Craig's been, Craig, Craig calls me a lot, but all he wants to talk about is movement snow. You want to stay another year, Craig?
Sure.
And we'll assume Chris does, if he wants to fight it, we'll let him fight it, so here, I'd like to make the appointment for one more year for Craig from the city and Chris Woslaw from the council to serve as members of the board. Somebody make a motion for that one? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we got anything for Zach? I don't either. All right, motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
And the second, all in favor?
Aye.